Okay, thank you everyone for being here. Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and get started here. We will start with the pledge of allegiance. If everyone could please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands unuttered in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Everybody is here, including our new inductees. Can you get a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We are up to communications and I've been asked if we would consider extending from three minutes to five minutes. We have four people who signed up to speak, so I would like to make a motion to extend the communications from three to five minutes.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. So if you guys could set the clock for five minutes.
I have no idea how to do that.
Or don't worry about it.
Or just reset.
So let's get started with comments. Thank you, panelists.
Right. Gentlemen, it's actually been five years since I last attended the Melville Board of Education meeting, but I very much wanted to be here today to recognize the accomplishments and thank two outgoing board members for their service. Two board members with a combined 21 years of public service. First, Larry Felton. Larry was an active and engaged Melville parent and coach long before he decided to run for the board in 2007. He won a seat that year in a campaign that featured six candidates. He went on to win four more April elections. His remarkable and perfect 5-0 record in Melville Board elections is unmatched for the past 30 years, and maybe even longer than that. Larry was a fierce advocate for students and teachers during his five terms, and he extended that advocacy to the state level, becoming president of the Missouri School Boards Association. Larry gave Melville students and community a voice at the state level in Jefferson City. Again, unprecedented, because to the best of my knowledge, no other Melville Board of Education member has ever achieved that level of influence at the state. Larry, you have earned a much deserved break, and I wish you and Martha the best in the years to come. Thank you for your service to Melville. Kevin, you're next. Kevin Schardner. Kevin first became active in the spring of 2015 when he recognized that Melville was at an inflection point, struggling financially and needing to pass a tax proposal. He, along with other parents and community members, stepped forward to help. Kevin rallied the community, informed and educated voters of what was at stake, and helped MSD pass the first operational tax increase in nearly 20 years. He then took the next step and ran for the board. He won easily in 2016 and went on to serve six years, the last three as board president. Now, I suspect that every person who has ever sat in that chair has, at times, felt the weight of the entire district on their shoulders. These past two years, navigating a pandemic, remote learning, and controversy over masks and vaccines, has been especially challenging to educators and board members. Kevin's hard work, willingness to seek outside sources of information, and engage with MSD residents via phone calls and emails was the right approach to leadership. Kevin, Melville was fortunate to have you sitting in that chair with, at times, I suspect, the weight of the district on your shoulders. Thank you for your service, and I wish you and your family the best in the years to come.
Thank you. Laura.
Good evening. I couldn't let this occasion go by without thanking Larry Felton and Kevin Schardner for their time and dedication to the Melville School District. Larry, thank you for your steadfastness in advocating for students of Melville over these past five terms on the board. You were on the board before I became a parent, and before I realized how important the board would be in shaping my children's learning environment. Your time on the board and working with the MSBA demonstrates your commitment to public education and the students of our district. Kevin, you, Peggy, and the whole Prop R committee got the job done for Melville right when my daughter was starting kindergarten. The passing of Prop R gave my husband and I the confidence to remain in Melville, and I'm so glad we did. Your continued leadership during the pandemic, using stats and data based on current scientific knowledge, has helped steer parents, teachers, and students through these extremely difficult years. Thank you for your leadership. I'm very excited to see Sarah Grace Wright and Scott Hudrich join the board tonight. I was able to talk and spend time getting to know both candidates during their recent campaign. I think the voters of the district made an excellent decision on April 5th. Grace and Scott bring a wealth of knowledge and experience with them that I know will benefit the district. And I'd hate to end without briefly mentioning Melville's current COVID metrics. Just this week, Webster Grove School District, which has a similar 1.5 positivity rate, triggered for temporary mandatory masking, was able to pivot quickly, protect their students and staff during uptick in COVID cases, and hopefully prevent a larger outbreak. I think everyone's goal is to keep our kids in school. I believe having these metrics continues to accomplish this goal. I'd like to see the BOE continue to certify the 1.5 positivity rate for temporary mandatory masking to help protect teachers, staff, and students, and keep our kids where they need to be in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you. Maria Kluth-Hoppy. Now, you're only doing five minutes, right? Not 10.
It's Marya Kluth-Hoppy, but I get that all the time, mispronounced. I'm a 40-year resident, so I've been around a long time, a parent of a 2004 Melville High School graduate, a longtime district volunteer at several schools and district-wide, and then I was on the board from '02 to '05, so I have seen a few things. I'm here to thank Kevin Schardner and Larry Felton for their service to the Melville School District Board of Education. Over the years, you had to make some easy and some difficult decisions about finances, staffing, curriculum, while following legal guidelines and legislative laws to ensure that the students receive the best education possible. With a diverse community, some decisions were well received and some not. Then, you've had the COVID pandemic to deal with and make decisions to protect the health and welfare of students and staff. You have done a commendable job in all areas. Thank you. Kevin, I'll address you first. Served six years, 2016 to 2022. You volunteered at your children's school and then led a major ballot issue successfully before running for school board and being elected. I have followed your actions in the messenger and other news releases that show your helpfulness and dedication to the success of the children. You are data-driven in your decision-making progress that has helped the district to thrive and are to be commended. You have been a leader as board member and then as board president. You have strengthened your skills and abilities by studying and taking advantage of MSBA training opportunities and received your master board member accreditation from the Missouri School Boards Association. Thank you for your service on the Melville Board of Education. Larry, you've served 15 years from 2007 to 22. You began your community volunteerism coaching numerous ball teams and supporting the YMCA's various programs and serving on their board. Starting in the late '90s at MHS, you and your wife Martha were dedicated choir parents. I met you in 2000, and as a band parent, I didn't hold the choir support against you at all. You also willingly volunteered wherever you were needed at MHS. Your insightful analysis, data, of a problem or a situation was appreciated by many. After MHS, you even helped the Melville Oakville Foundation numerous times. It became apparent to many that you were ready to step up to the next level of involvement in the Melville School District. I was accused of suggesting and encouraged you to run for the school board, but somebody else beat me to it. You ran and were elected, but we won't even talk about all the data you ran about elections and how to run elections, so forget that. You too used the data to make decisions that impact the student, staff, the district, and even the community. As a board member, you took governance seriously by diligently studying the issues, reviewing the data, talking with all involved, looking at short-term and long-term consequences before casting your vote. As a board member, your path to greater involvement meant serving on various district committees, representing the district at special school district and MSBA, and then becoming a board officer and then board president. You also received your master board member accreditation from MSBA. As your children completed their Melville education, you became more involved in MSBA as a delegate for Melville than teaching classes and forums at MSBA conferences and serving on statewide MSBA educational committees. Then you became an officer and moved up to be president of MSBA. Your involvement at MSBA allowed you the opportunity to learn from other experts and boards in Missouri. Then you were able to share those best practices and educational knowledge with the rest of the Melville Board. Your involvement also showcased the successes that the Melville District has achieved across the whole state of Missouri. You even achieved the highest recognition of distinguished board member from MSBA. We should say thanks to Martha and your family for sharing you with Melville for over 15 years. Thanks for your dedicated service to the Melville School District. Now, perhaps you can sit back and relax, or perhaps enjoy time with Martha and your children and grandchildren, or find your next volunteer opportunity that involves educational success for children. For both of you, whatever you choose, know that your dedication to the education of the children in the Melville School District has made a positive impact and is greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Dan Fowler.
What else could I possibly add? Then, the accolades from two former board members here and a parent in the district. You go, Larry. I'm going to show my age here a little bit. When you ran for the board 15 years ago, I had just gone off the board nine years earlier, 24 years ago. So I do want to come, and I'll make this very short and to the point. Larry, if anybody wants an example of what a board member should be, you're it. And you did set a modern-day record, at least tied one with Alex Lantos, in 15 years on the board. No one else in modern times has lasted that long. It is a horse-whipping, as you know, sitting here. I bit on that side of the table. So I want to thank you for your service to the district. The one thing that I know about you, every decision you ever made was in the best interest of kids, despite the noise that was going on out there. So I thank you for your service to this community and to the board. Kevin, you and I got to meet each other seven years ago during Prop R. You remember our conversation as we were sitting in the old boardroom around the table? You're not a liberal, by the way. I found that out that night. Liberal board you. So anyway, Kevin, thank you for your service. I say this all the time about being board president. I got to serve two times as board president. I shouldn't say I got to. Nobody knows what it's like to sit there until you've actually done it. Peggy, you're about to find out. So here's the best place to be, and both of you are about to enter it. In this community, the best position to have is as a former board member.
Thank you. Okay. Let's see here. We are up to governance for the seat of board, acceptance of unofficial results of the April 5th, 2022 annual school election. I do not have this up right in front of me. Do we have a motion right?
They have a move to accept that election. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Congratulations. Okay, as if the nice things said about us weren't enough, now we, Larry and I, get some more outgoing recognition, so. Uh-oh.
Good evening. I have the pleasure of making some official remarks on behalf of Melville's. So, on behalf of Melville School District, the district administration, our employees and students, I would like to congratulate Mr. Kevin Schardner for completing his third year as president of the Melville School District Board of Education, including two years during a global pandemic. We are grateful to you for your service and your commitment to the students, families, and employees of Melville School District. Additionally, I would like to thank Mr. Schardner for serving two terms, or six years, on the Melville School District Board of Education. Thank you again for your service and careful decision-making on district policy, finances, governance, and COVID-19 responses. Your selfless service to the Melville community is appreciated by students, staff, and parents. Two items for you. The first is a plaque as a symbol of our appreciation for your service. Another plaque so that you can use this gavel at home if you so desire, and appreciation for your presidency.
Thank you.
And one more. Also on behalf of Melville School District, our administration, students, and staff, I'd like to thank Mr. Larry Felton for your service on the Board of Education for the past 15 years. Mr. Felton has served as board secretary for four one-year terms and as board vice president for an additional four one-year terms. He's received awards for his public school advocacy from the Missouri Association of School Administrators and the Missouri School Boards Association. Mr. Felton, we thank you for guiding our district through your decisions related to policy, finance, and governance, always with the best interest of our students, staff, and community in mind. Please accept this plaque as a symbol of our appreciation for your service to our community. Thank you, Larry.
You guys want to stand up here by me? So these are my friends that I made. Mrs. Sue Weedman, she is the woodworking teacher at Berkeley Middle School. And these students, with their own hands, made these benches for you. So I wanted to introduce these students because they put a lot of time and effort into this gift, and I thought it was a great thing for you guys to take away since our students made them. And I am going to apologize now if I say your names wrong. Hamza Basik, who's that? Step forward a little bit. Wave to everybody. Brayden Sanaman, Sammy Roberts, Cassie Wells, Liam Ridley, Ethan Vaughn, Adam Grohovic? Did I say that wrong? Okay, I'm sorry. And Madison Westerman. So thank you, guys. You did an awesome job. If you would get your picture with Larry and Kevin. Because they won't fit in your Camaro.
Can we have you all just stand behind the bench?
I can get straps, put them on top.
Time to get rid of the car.
It's not time to get rid of the car. Thank you, thank you very much, that is really special.
I think I just...
Should we just wave down?
Yeah. And then just make a line, so I can get your picture.
I'd like to say something.
Scoot in, guys.
Go for it.
Uh oh, did we miss one?
Okay. You guys, I'm going to miss you so much, I don't even know where to begin. I'd best start with Larry because he's one of the ones that got me involved in this nonsense in the first place. In 2013, I believe it was, he and a friend sat down with me at Bread Co. and said, "Oh, come on Jean, you can do this, it's only one meeting a month."
Six hours.
We've all heard that story. But, and I'll never forget, one of the biggest things I was worried about at that point was, because I knew that we were losing money to the state, was how do you figure the foundation formula? And there's two grown men sitting across from me trying to explain this to me, and neither one of them are making any sense. But I was making sense to them, it just wasn't to me. But anyway, it seems like yesterday, and Larry's taught me so much about the legislative process, and how we can stay out in front of issues that are coming down the pike that could affect our school, and kept me company at all the conventions that we've gone to over the last seven or eight years for me. And I really, really appreciate it. And when I say this next, it applies to both of these men, and it's very rare, well, maybe not that rare, but I think it is, that these, both of these men have such integrity. And if you don't know what that means, it means that they do the right thing even if they don't think anybody's watching. And both of these guys fit that example of absolute integrity at all times. And I'm very grateful to have worked with you both. Kevin, I think I told you this last night when we spoke, I said that I think that you were put in our president position for the last two years for a reason, because I don't think anyone else could have handled it with the integrity and the tenacity and temperament that you brought to that position under fire. And I really, really want to thank you for that, and I know our whole community is grateful, and I thank you. Larry, thanks for everything. I'm going to miss you so much, I can't even put it into words. You're a man among men, and you know, your service to our community is outstanding, and I just don't know how to thank you for that, but I'll always try, and I hope you'll stay close in case I need you, and I know I will.
I think you've gotten speed down.
I do. Thank you both so much.
Thank you.
Well Kevin and Larry, I've only been working with you for a little less than two years, it seems like it's been a bit longer than that, but you two have shown me, when I, you know, had gone to meetings to try and get a handle on it, and sitting in this chair, it's a completely different experience, you two were both welcoming, helpful, and always were able to answer questions when questions popped up, and there's a couple in this kind of a job. But obviously the last two years have been unusual for anybody. This is different than a financial crisis, this is different than anything else that we've dealt with, and you two have helped us, guided us, directed us, and helped us move through this. And Kevin specifically, you've shown that sometimes doing the right thing isn't a popular thing, but it's the best thing, especially when you have data that shows you it's the right thing. And you've always been central to that. You've always stuck to following what you've said, backing it up with data, and dealing with people that have disagreements with you on that. You've done it with politeness, calmness, and direction that's kept us going in this kind of a strange situation. Thank you for everything you've done, and thank you for being an amazing board president.
Thank you.
Larry, one thing I find out when going to the MSBA conference in November, is everybody knows you. When I, you know, people would ask, "Hey, which school district are you from?", I'd say, "Melville". The immediate question is, "Do you know Larry Felton?". I mean, your presence across the state is amazing. You've gotten school districts across the state interested in advocacy and following up with what our state legislature does. And I've seen you give speeches about this, I've seen you give speeches about all manners of topics. Your reach across the state is immeasurable. And you've handed me the one thing that I didn't think was possible, you handed me the spreadsheet. That spreadsheet is a work, and it's amazing what you've started with, and the fact that you've handed it off to me knowing I will try to do my best to fill in, that's an awesome responsibility, and thank you for that. You've shown me what state advocacy is for, it's to try and direct and see what the state legislature is doing for us and against us, and always trying to keep a step ahead of it, and try and figure out what the next step is going to be. So thank you very much for that.
I'll address you first, Kevin. Coming to the board this year, like everyone says, it's only been a year, but it feels so, so very much longer than that. The way you welcomed me here, and I appreciate all your guidance and leadership, it was truly irreplaceable. I always knew if I needed to learn more about something, or if, I know I'm not the easiest person to work with at times, that I just always had you there, and I know you would work through problems with me, and I really appreciate that. And then Larry, I know I don't look like a soccer player anymore, but for those who don't know, Larry was my youth soccer coach all those years ago, so I knew Larry. Larry was my coach at the YMCA before he was even on the board, I think he was running, maybe while he was still my coach, and you were also the person that handed me my high school diploma. And you've, I wish we had more time together, but you've done so much in your 15 years, and for both of you, I know Larry was an active board member at the time, and Kevin, I've told you many times, I know you were very involved. I, as a senior in high school, complained to the board about funding and cuts, it was Dr. Gaines' first meeting, and then Prop R was a resounding success for our district, and I want to thank both of you so much. You guys have been our most successful board in terms of passing ballot initiatives in our district history, and I know how hard that is, I got to witness that just a little bit with Prop S, which was overwhelmingly popular, and it was a different time in our district in 2015 when Prop R was happening, and it would have been much harder if you guys didn't lay the foundation and do all that very important work. So I appreciate it, our district is definitely in a better place than what you found it. I think that is what a board member is being all about at the end of the day.
Thank you.
Patrick, that's a really good story, like you have, yeah, it's really good, the connection that you have, so much different than us. Larry, wow, this is very emotional, this is very emotional, very emotional. I'm thankful to have been able to work alongside of you for the past four years. You were instrumental in helping me through my acclimation to becoming a board member, and I have deep gratitude for that. Something, and Jeff touched on it, and it's a part of my story too. When I first was elected to the board, and I went to my onboard training through MSBA, and I showed up at the training, my Melville tag, and the minute anybody saw me as I was introducing myself and saw that I was from Melville, their first response wasn't even welcome, Tori, it was, "Wow, you are very lucky because you work with Larry Felton." Larry is amazing, he's a wonderful advocate, and the enormous amount of pride I felt right then, just stepping into this brand-new role, not having realized before everything that you've done and accomplished, and everything that you've been involved in, because you're not the kind of person who just talks about it, you just do, you just do, you just do it. But it's something that has stuck with me, and I'm very proud to say that I have served with you. You have done your very best in such an incredible job for this community and for our students. I agree with the decisions, you know, when you have, you wrap your mind around your thoughts and your participation with everything that you're doing, it's always in the best interest of these kids. Your countless hours of hard work and your dedication for advocacy is awesome. So thank you, Larry, for your many years of service, I will always appreciate everything that you've done in your role, and I will also always appreciate how you've cared for me as an individual, so thank you. And Kevin, it's hard to see the people you trust and admire leave from a shared experience, especially one like this, especially one that's had the combination of what the past couple of years have brought and represented. You've led with compassion, integrity, and accountability. You've come to the table with thoughts, ideas, and perspectives that have added so much value to our board, for our community, and I respect that you have honored decisions made by this group. You were also an integral part of my entrance on the board, and I can't thank you enough for the time that you took as I began my journey. Thank you for your willingness to listen to my opinion and my thoughts with an open mind, even when they were different from yours. Thank you for acknowledging my value as a member of this board, and thank you for doing the same for our community through all of your service. As president, you have been a leader for us through many challenges. The enormous amount of time and energy you have put into this volunteer position has not gone unnoticed by myself and everyone sitting here, and I think our entire community, regardless of the opinions that have been brought forth, especially over these past couple of years. And just thank you for your tremendous commitment and passion. Despite some difficulties these past few years, there is so much to celebrate, so much good within this community and our schools, and I am very proud to have worked alongside of you in this servant leadership role. Forgiveness, I forgive you for telling me it's just four hours a month. And it's funny, that's come up a few times. I forgive you for stealing some of my best lines and words of wisdom.
True.
It's true. Please remember that I'm still your person if you ever need a detailed seating chart map.
Yes, I still have that.
And, while likely not the last time I'll have to say this to you, it seems the only appropriate way to send you off, Kevin, you are not always right, but... You're not wrong.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, thank you so much for everything that you've done, seriously, both of you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
My turn. Larry, I imagine it must feel a little strange to be here last night, sitting in that chair on the Board of Education, considering you've been sitting there for 15 years. Heck, having gone through the global pandemic, it probably feels like about 30 years. Seriously, your resolute dedication to the children of Melville School District is beyond impressive. You have been a wonderful advocate for the children of our district, and have been a champion for public education, working diligently to stay on top and in front of legislation that will affect our community. You have taken the time to build a rapport with our Missouri legislators, and maintained a relationship with them to make sure that the bills that get passed in Missouri are beneficial to our schools and our children. You have worked tirelessly across all areas of our district, and you have provided great knowledge and ideas for helping us to stay focused on continuous improvement. In addition to that, you have served as our MSBA rep, and were elected and served as the MSBA president. You have received numerous awards, with the most impressive of those awards to date, at least that I know of, being the most recent MSBA Future Builders Foundation Carter D. Ward Excellence in Advocacy Award. You have behaved professionally and with dignity through good times and bad. You have served as a mentor to me and to many, and for that, I thank you. I thank you on behalf of our community, our children, and our staff for your many years of service, and I wish you the best of luck, and as everybody else says, I hope you don't mind when I call with questions.
I suspect I'm going to be able to...
Because I'm going to have them. Kevin, I first met Kevin in a meeting when we were discussing Prop R, which wasn't quite Prop R yet, we were going through some struggling times in the district, and there was a grassroots group effort of people that met to try to figure out what we could do. And we developed it, and it's what we all know as Prop R. We became friends, and we built a great working relationship focusing on what we can do to help improve the Melville School District for our kids and for our community. Since the day I met Kevin, I have always been impressed with his abilities to gather data and drive decisions with that data. I would be remiss if I didn't mention the many spreadsheets, line graphs, bar graphs, pie charts, scatter plots, and histograms he has provided to us to help us make those data-driven decisions. I specifically remember, prior to Kevin and I being on the Board of Education, sitting at my dining room table with our marketing hats on, attempting to make decisions on mailers for our Prop R campaign, Kevin, being the engineer in the room, tried to convince me and Kim West that we needed to put several different datographs on our marketing material for Prop R. Luckily, another quality Kevin holds is the ability to accept constructive criticism, admit, and admit when he's wrong. In all seriousness, Kevin, you have led the school board in the most trying of times, navigating us through a global pandemic, and always making decisions based on what we felt was going to best protect all of our students and staff. We have been faced with adversity and even sometimes hatred, but you have handled it professionally and with dignity. I have appreciated the last seven years of your leadership and strategic planning skills. I want to thank you from our community and all our children in our district for doing what you have done for the district in the last seven years, and I look forward to seeing you, seeing what your next projects will be. I thank you for your friendship, and don't worry, you'll get a text from me every hour.
I'll answer your texts. Thank you. Okay, down to Larry and I, and I'm going to go first. As Peggy said, I'm an engineer, but if this comes across as cold or unfeeling, it's not because I'm cold or unfeeling, or because I'm an engineer, it's because I'm going to do my best to hold it together, as you all have made this extremely emotional.
You can do it, Cap.
We'll see. So tonight, I'm feeling appreciation, pride, and optimism. I have appreciation for the people who back in 2015 welcomed me and my son Thomas onto the Prop R campaign team. Appreciation and pride in how our community came together to pass Prop R and two ballot measures since. I appreciate that my community has entrusted me with the opportunity to serve on this board, although I am sure most would not agree with every decision I have made. I am proud that I always put in the work to understand the issues, and that I always made decisions based on what I believed was best for our students and community. I am appreciative to our teachers, building administrators, and all of our support staff who do the things necessary to provide a great education to our children. You create value at the front line with our children. As I have heard Jean say, "Without you, we wouldn't have a product." You're all members of an noble profession, and I appreciate all of you. I am proud that I was able to support your efforts, and applaud your accomplishments. I appreciate the opportunity to have worked with Dr. Gaines and our entire administrative team. In each of you, I have seen the unique skills, intelligence, and wealth of information you bring to leadership in our district. I am sure I cannot adequately convey how much I have enjoyed, appreciated, or learned from our many conversations, one as late as yesterday, late afternoon. I thank you for your dedication to our district, and know you will continue to do great things for our students and for our community. I wish to express my appreciation for our past board directors, many of whom I have met on this journey. I appreciate the information and experiences you have shared with me. I am fortunate to call a few of you close friends, and I know that... You create value at the front line with our children. As I have heard Gene say, "Without you, we wouldn't have a product." You're all members of an noble profession, and I appreciate all of you. I am proud that I was able to support your efforts and applaud your accomplishments. I appreciate the opportunity to have worked with Dr. Gaines and our entire administrative team. In each of you, I have seen the unique skills, intelligence, and wealth of information you bring to leadership in our district. I am sure I cannot adequately convey how much I have enjoyed, appreciated, or learned from our many conversations, one as late as yesterday, late afternoon. I thank you for your dedication to our district, and know you will continue to do great things for our students and for our community. I wish to express my appreciation for our past board directors, many of whom I have met on this journey. I appreciate the information and experiences you have shared with me. I am fortunate to call a few of you close friends, and I know that you already understand how much I value this. To my fellow board directors, none of us foresaw the last two years coming, except maybe for Peggy, who said to me last year, "Hey Kevin, you should be president again." Serving with you has been an honor, and it's been humbling. We have gotten to know each other, not just as board members who occasionally have spirited debates, argue intensely, usually find common ground, but sometimes agree to disagree. At the end of each day, we have always chosen to respect each other and to work together to move forward as a team. As president for these past three years, I do not have adequate enough words to express my appreciation for each of you and your support. So, I brought a small gift for each of you. It's actually to the right of all of you, which has the words of Teddy Roosevelt that I believe speak well to our shared experiences, whose words were these. "It is not the critic who counts, not the person who points out how the strong person stumbles, or where the doer of deeds could have done them better. The credit belongs to the person who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who errs, who comes up short again and again, because there is no effort without error and shortcoming, but who does actually strive to do the deeds, who knows great enthusiasms, the great devotions, who spends themselves in a worthy cause, who at the best knows at the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at the worst, if they fail, at least fail while daring greatly, so that their place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who neither know victory nor defeat." These are Teddy Roosevelt's words from his "The Man in the Arena" speech given 112 years ago, almost to the day. He gave them on April 23rd, 1910. We all raised our hands and were elected to serve our community on this school board. We voluntarily put ourselves in the public eye to guide our district through board governance. Making governance decisions means choosing. Making governance decisions in a crisis means some of those choices are going to be hard and sometimes painful. When faced with the difficult choices, this board met the responsibility head-on. We put in the work, we made the difficult decisions we believed were best for our students, our families, and our community. We all chose to be in this arena, and I am proud to have been here with each of you. All right, this one's going to be the tough one. My last statement of appreciation is for the people who mean the most to me, Beth, Thomas, and Laurel. More than anyone, you have been with me for this entire journey. From the very first informational meeting seven years ago through tonight, you have encouraged me, supported me, offered your experience and advice, provided different viewpoints, and sometimes just provided a voice of reason saying to take a break. Thomas and Laurel have opened up my understanding of our world across a wide range of topics in a way that only younger generations can, something that Patrick Oso brings to this As a family, you not only supported me, you helped me grow as a person. I could not have done this job without you. Through the craziness of this past year, with the added stress of conflicts, ever-present insults, and even the general degradation in our society's tone and respect for each other, I never doubted we were in the same corner, and I always strive to be the person both you and I would respect when we look back at this in time. In six years, we have been through a lot as a family, not just the board, and we have come out of these challenges stronger, both as a family and as individuals. Beth, Thomas, and Laurel, I love you. I am proud of you, and you mean everything to me. In a few short minutes, I will no longer be a member of this board, but I expect we all know this won't be the end. I am passionate about public education, loyal to our U.S. Republic, and then committed to supporting the equal protection and privileges our governing documents provide all American citizens. I value what I have learned in this role, the good things we have been able to accomplish, and the friendships formed along the way. I leave with the confidence that we have highly qualified board directors who will continue the progress we've begun. I see the strong relationship our community and schools have, as our community has shown their support repeatedly. I know our administration, teachers, and everyone who supports our schools will continue to make Melville a great school district. And I will leave you all with one final thought. It is because I know the character of each of you that I am so optimistic about our future. This is why I know the Melville School District's best days are still ahead of us. Thank you. Sorry.
When I started putting this together, I always, when I write something down, I want a theme. So, I decided the theme for this one is "What a Long Strange Trip This Has Been." I want to start with my thank yous. First, I want to thank my dad. My dad's a farmer, and he served on a school board for three terms. Now, to take that much time out of the field, that makes a mark on you, and that's, I think that's been my greatest motivation to be a school board member. I thank my mom and dad for teaching me that actions speak a whole lot louder than words. I thank my family, especially my kids, they all had a positive experience here at Melville, and it was kind of contagious, and I felt like if I could do the same thing for other students that my kids had, then it was worth taking a shot at it. And I also want to thank my wife, because she didn't always encourage me, but she always made sure my motives were right, that I was doing this for the right reasons and not for the pay, or not for the parking space, or anything like that. I want to thank the administrators, the teachers, and the support staff that make Melville work. I want to thank the parents who trust us the most with the most precious people in their lives, their children. And I want to thank the students who are the reason we're all here. Now, I was going to start throwing out numbers, but I think we're way past that. So, I'm going to kind of treat this like an exit interview, which I guess it is. I think school board is a team sport. It's about relationships and trust, and this is a terrific group of people. I'd like to think I'm indispensable, but we know better than that. But the five people that remain on this board are a terrific nucleus. I believe school board service is a calling. It's not a political calling, and I don't think you should ever confuse the two. A calling is when you believe in fundamental principles that benefit all. Politics is when you modify those principles to meet your agenda. School boards can either succumb to conflict and adversity, or use it as a vehicle for change and improvement. The board you seat here is a change and improvement group. Now, I've worked with 24 board members, and I will tell you, there were three of them that did not embrace that. They were all about conflict and disruption. It was three of the longest years of my life. But 21 of the 24 people I've worked with couldn't be better people. I'm proud that they chose change. We look at what we've done, we figure out ways to do it better, and we make it better. One thing I will note is the polarization that we're seeing as board members. It used to be you could sit down with somebody, have a disagreement on an issue, fine, and life would go on. Now, if they disagree on one thing, it's polarized, it's tribal. This is our mission, is to continue to do what's right, not what's popular. I had the opportunity to represent Melville on regional groups, state level, nationally, but the neat part of that is what I learned from it and could bring back here. I found out that every school district faces the same problems. I don't care where you are, it's the same issues. But what's different is the priority that different boards place on which problems they're going to solve. That's something that I think we have done during the challenge of the last two years. I think it's crystal clear that we're in the safety, security, and the instruction of children business. I will make two other comments about seeing how I know Jefferson City better than I really should. There's been more public education legislation this year than I have ever seen, and it's all negative. Everything either takes funding away, control away, or makes political decisions in an educational setting. And I will also say that the majority of the people that represents this district, two senators and six representatives, the majority don't support public education. That is a fact. So, remember that when you have a chance to talk to candidates, ask them. The one thing that I've admired most about this board is that when we look at things, we look at facts. We get past the personalities, and we get past the personal agendas. And I think it's living proof to what Daniel Patrick Monahan said as a U.S. Senator, that everyone is entitled to their own opinion, but not their own set of facts. And I think we've become a very fact-data-decision-based organization. Now, to the board. I'm going to give you my bank account number if you'd like to... Again, I'm going to tell you, it's been an honor to serve with you. I'm really proud of what we did as a board over these last two years. I think our resiliency and our focus was laser-sharp. My only advice is make sure you stay in the "what do we do" business, rather than "how do we do it" business. You're all my colleagues, you're all my friends, and I'm really going to miss this time together. I would ask you to be a mentor to Grace and to Scott as they come in. I've seen that with every other person that's come here that's new, please do the same for them. And I would ask you to continue to grow, look beyond not only the board, but look at everything that's going on around us. It's the same things, we may find some things that we can avoid making mistakes on because somebody's already done it. And of course, I have the Teddy Roosevelt here quote, too, so we've been around each other too long. But I think... Want to see it? You don't believe me?
Great minds.
The important thing is, we're not driven by criticism, we're driven by facts and what we do to make students safe, secure, and give them good teaching. It's real simple. And until you've gone through that decision-making process, we respect your opinion, but when you're in the middle of it, you got to go with what you know. To the members of the new board, there's still time to get out. The best piece of advice I can give you is be the person you are, not the person you think you're supposed to be when you sit here. You were elected for the qualities you have as an individual. Bring those to this table. The strength of this body is seven different viewpoints that all have a common goal. We know what the destination's going to be, we might just take different routes to get there, but we know what the destination is. Listen and learn. I think leadership is a lot more listening than it is talking. When you come in here, it's not one school district, it's 19 unique communities. Everyone's different, we have the same goals, and they have the same needs, but they're different, and learn from that. Speak from your strengths, and please respect the confidentiality of closed sessions. There's a quote I picked up a long time ago. It talks about "Conversation and discussion build a strong board. Gossip will destroy a board's credibility and sow the seeds of discontent." You have a great challenge there, but I think you'll do it well. An effective board is based on trust and respect you hold for each member. Ask questions. These folks will answer anything, they're good. They'll help you with everything you want to know. And whoever your mentor is, listen to them, they can help. And I'm going to mention the four mentors that helped me with this journey. Mary is here, and you've met her. Cindy Christopher was on the board the first couple of years I was here, and she was just a wealth of information. Melissa Randall, who's the executive director of MSBA, kind of helped me up with the big guys. And I'd like to introduce Dr. Vic Lenz. Vic, stand up. Vic was my personal mentor. It started out down in Springfield, we went out for lunch, and he said, "Well, you know, there's this regional thing we could use some help with." And he's been reeling me in for 12 years. But he kind of ignited a passion in me to start working things at a national and state level. Vic, you're a friend, a colleague, and this is all your fault. In conclusion, so what am I going to do next? Well, it's not going to be public speaking, I don't think. I have six grandchildren to spoil, which I intend to do quite a lot, but I'm still doing some work for advocacy on public education. There's some things I want to do with MSBA and just in general. I'm working with a group to try and get early childhood set up as a county-wide organization, much like SSD. And I'm also finishing up some work on special school district on a four-year review. But other than that, I still have some Lego kits I haven't worked on yet, so we're getting there. So, to say goodbye, you know, I was going to do something schmaltzy, but then I read this book. It's a book called "The Man I Knew." It's the story of George Herbert Walker Bush, President Bush, and it was about his life after the presidency. And there was a page, I think it was page 137, and he said, "Here's what you do when you go out of office." So, it says, "Stay out of the way," says, "Stay away from commentary on social media," "Stay away from events where you might second-guess," "Stay away from saying, 'Here's the way I did it,'" and "Stay away from board meetings." But then I have a footnote that, but then there's always Zoom, and of course, there's always lunches. But I added a sixth thing. Said, "I'm now going to become a resource. If you call, I'll help, but you're going to have to call. This is your show now. It's important for teamwork to get together, and you'll do fine." So, I want to thank you again, it's been an honor to serve you, and goodbye.
All right, this may have been the most difficult board meeting I've sat through.
I agree.
All right, so we are up to the board adjournments. Sinai, I'm not sure if that's pronounced right or not. Do I need a motion on that?
So moved.
Second?
On favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We are, we're just going to roll right into the next one, right?
If you can, are you going to take a break for a minute?
All right, short break, but not very long.
No break?
Okay.
Okay.
Basically, in part, I need myself in office to start the duties of school district and for the whole school district. All right. How do you say those, say the service to best my ability to support the law? The school district will be paying some air responsibility.
All right. So I will preside over the election of the president and vice president.
Chris, is your microphone on?
I thought it was.
There it goes, I hear it now.
There.
There. Thank you.
All right, so we're going to, I'll do the, work through the election of the president and vice president, and then the new president will take over. So I'd open the floor for nominations for president.
I would like to nominate Peggy Hassler for president.
Do you accept the nomination, Peggy?
I do.
Are there any other nominations? Is there a nomination, is there a motion to cease nominations and accept Peggy Hassler by acclamation?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Next will be vice president, I'll open the floor for nominations for board vice president.
I'd like to nominate Tori Belkey.
Do you, do you accept?
I do, yes.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, can I get a motion to cease nominations and accept Tori Belkey by acclamation?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Madam President, it's now yours.
Okay. I would like to call for nominations for secretary.
I would like to nominate Jean Pretto. I believe she would make an excellent board secretary in her final year of her third term.
Okay, Jean, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Are there any other nominations?
I move to cease nominations and accept Jean Pretto by acclamation.
Second?
Do I have to do roll call or just?
No, just regular roll.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Jean is the secretary. I would like to make a motion. We now need to discuss the treasurer. Jean?
I'm sorry, what just?
For treasurer?
Oh, for treasurer, I would like to nominate Marshall Crutcher or appoint, motion to appoint Marshall Crutcher as treasurer.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Congratulations, Michael.
Congrats, Marshall.
You are the treasurer.
Do you accept, Marshall? Yes.
You did now.
Next, we need to accept the Insurance Facility Finance Policy Communication Advocacy Committee assignments. If I could get a motion to appoint those positions?
One quick thing before we make the motion. I know we discussed that we're going to make the change to the advocacy appointments. So for the advocacy committee, it's going to be myself, you, and Jean.
Okay.
So, and it's not going to be in rotation at least for the moment.
Another year, maybe. Okay.
Because we still have, there's some transitional work that I have to work on that Larry handed me that we need to get that together.
That's fine, so we will move to adopt that, with that change.
There was also some discussion about the finance committees, about how they should probably, you know, stay on until later in the year, I don't know how that discussion ever ended. Was there any discussion on that?
For now, we're going to just move forward, I think, with this.
Leave it as it is, okay.
So, want to make a motion to approve that?
Sure.
Great.
I make a motion to approve that? That's what you asked.
I'll second. I'll second that motion.
All in favor for accepting the Insurance Facility Finance Policy Communication Advocacy Committee?
Fine.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 7-0. Okay. So, the next thing we need to vote on is the MSBA delegate and alternate. I think everybody here, does anybody want to have any discussion about that, or are we good? The delegate attends the delegate assembly in the fall and the summer in order to vote on issues on behalf of the district and represent MSBA. So if I could have somebody motion to appoint somebody? Well, it can't be you. Oh yeah, no, it can be you, sorry. Go ahead.
I make a motion to appoint Jeff to the MSD representative.
I'll second that.
Make a motion to appoint?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? 7-0. Jeff is the MSBA delegate, and... Do we need, let's see, hold on just a second.
We need an alternate.
We need an alternate.
We need an alternate, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Grace Wright as the alternate MSBA rep.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye. Good.
Okay. Now we need to appoint an SSD delegate and alternate. The delegate attends the SSD governing council meetings, which are once a month, right, Patrick? About?
About.
About?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Patrick McKelvey as the SSD delegate. He was the alternate last year and was very active and involved with SSD.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 7-0. Now we need to appoint the SSD alternate?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Scott Hoogard as the alternate SSD rep. Does that a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
At this point, the reorganization is complete, and we need to move on to consider bid for OHS entrance and restroom upgrades. Mike?
First, I'd like to thank Kevin and Larry for your service. And I'd like to welcome Grace and Scott. Congratulations. So tonight, I'd like to consider bids for OHS entrance and restroom upgrades. These will include additional, an additional security vest reveal at the front of Oakwood Senior and restroom upgrades as well. This project will be funded through the Facilities Department's capital budget. I'd like to move to approve the lowest qualified bid submitted by Jackson Building Group in the amount of $672,440, which includes professional and contingency fees. With that said, any questions?
Mike, is this a vendor we worked with before?
It is not.
Would you ask, I didn't hear you?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Is this a vendor we worked with before?
We have not, but we did have a Q&amp;A with them, meeting, and they're a smaller, family-owned company. We did check their references, and we got some good feedback from some other districts that have used them.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Is there an estimate on when this work would begin?
This would begin as soon as school is out.
And then, is there a timeline on the project?
Yeah, they'd be completed before.
Before the school, before it starts?
I will say there is some possibility that we start with safety, rest, or...
Oh, yes. Very possible.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else have questions? Okay, if I could get a motion?
I make a motion to approve the lowest qualified bid for Jackson Building Group in the amount of $672,444, which includes professional and contingency fees.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 7-0.
Very much.
Thank you. Now we'll have Ms. Dr. Smith with the strategic plan update and student preparation.
Thank you, Peggy, and congratulations to Grace and to Scott, we're happy to have you aboard. So tonight, I have the opportunity to discuss our personalized student preparation. It is one component of our complete strategic plan that goes through the year 2026. And so just as an opportunity to educate both our community, our current board members, as well as our new board members, we have five themes as part of the strategic plan. Tonight, we'll be talking about theme one, about personalized student preparation, but it also includes safety, access and opportunity, employee support, as well as being effective and efficient within our systems. So with regards to theme one, our personalized student preparation, there's a primary focus about pathways, or also called career clusters, and to be able to highlight the classes and the skills needed for students to be able to be successful. So, again, pathways, which are also referred to as career clusters, depending on who is, whose work you're referencing. These highlight the career pathways and the types of classes and skills. And so you'll see a constant question here in the presentation I have, and that is, how do we plan for this process to be met, not only currently, but where are we also going in the future? And so, we have five identified ways. One of these is through the themed schools process. That includes criteria and the overall process for implementation of what a themed school would be. In this particular instance, Rogers Elementary, Dr. Keno and I had the opportunity to visit Isles Elementary in Springfield, Illinois in December. And so, Dr. Keno has a particular interest in wanting to develop the potential of a themed school in the, in the particular pathway of international baccalaureate. And so, for his young scholars, as he likes to be able to refer to them as very lovingly, the goal of IB schools is to nurture and develop young students in caring, active participation, and a lifelong journey of learning. And so that really does, I think it really fits where his philosophy is at, but it's not just a single person's decision, it's a team decision, it's a community decision. So, we are continuing to move forward in the development of this piece, as well as at Woolwind Elementary. Most recently, Dr. DeKemper, our executive director of operations and planning and development, all those types of things, he and Dr. Meshke, principal at Woolwind Elementary, had a chance to visit West Plains Elementary. And so, they have been very heavily involved in environmental studies. And so, Woolwind has recently partnered, within the last few years, with, you can see, Missouri Department of Conservation, the Audubon Society, the Teton Science School, as well as the Smoky Mountain Institute at Tremont, to be able to provide continued place-based learning opportunities. So the potential of a themed school at Woolwind, through a grade level or through just an individual, you know, overall type of choice program, is something that we continue to work on as well. So the current status is we are looking for applications to be ready in summer '22, with the potential starting point pending approval processes to be as early as the 2023, 2024 school year. It's about one more year out before we have some formal pieces in play. Another component of this, that second way is through choice programming. We especially want to make sure that we are targeting student subgroups where under-representation exists. An example of that would be many times in STEM education, where the roles of females, especially the involvement of girls in secondary education, and sometimes elementary, can lack. What we want to try to ensure is providing opportunity for all of our groups of kids, no matter who they are, to be, make sure that every kid has every opportunity to be able to be successful in whatever pathway they choose to do. So through that lens of educational equity and choice programming, you can see here's a table of highlighting both our on-campus opportunities, our off-campus opportunities, as well as some other alternative opportunities that students have. Many times, you'll see these directed at the secondary level, maybe more so than at the elementary level when you start talking about, you know, college and career education. But you can see that we have a variety of programs in place. You'll see a few of these again in just a little bit as we get into that, that concept of college and career readiness. We are working and continuing to put some plans in place to partner with DESI around their youth apprenticeship program, as well as their Pathways to Prosperity program. So it is one way that we are trying to continue to move forward and push in additional opportunities. What is, what is, I believe, a fact, is that several of these program opportunities have become available within just the last few years. And so, one of the things that we will continue to look to be able to do is build upon what we've already built upon, as well as to continue to try to expand those opportunities so that all kids feel a sense of belonging and a sense of program choice that tends to suit them well. In the role of college and career readiness, one of the things we look to be able to do is to expand access. And so we have done some of those things. And again, that question of how do we plan for this process to be met? You really have to have an understanding of two key components. One of them is to know what it means to be a successful or success-ready student. The other one is to make sure that you know what is college and career readiness even mean. So, in order to be successful, a success-ready student, you know, you can see highlighted as part of the presentation, it's the knowledge, skills, behaviors, and experiences that really tend to stand out so that kids have the opportunity to achieve those personal goals they have. And from a college and career readiness standpoint, you will see, again, kind of that theme of the skills in reading and writing, communication, teamwork, critical thinking, problem-solving. That's where our portrait of a graduate really tends to have its foundation. So, that was not by accident, certainly that was also using resources and research that was out there in advance when we did that development, that program. What we currently have in place is just under 300 courses at the secondary level, and this is more specifically at the high school level. The number in parentheses tells, indicates exactly how many number of classes that we have. So as an example, in math... So as an example, in mathematics, we have 18 different types of classes. Sorry. Any clicks there? There we go. One of the things we will continue to do as we move towards the future is to make sure that our assessment and curriculum development also support those opportunities that you see within college and career readiness, because they all tend to weave around one another. Because you can't really do, have classes without having the conversation around curriculum development. You also need to make sure that you can provide a metric and be able to assess those, those levels of success that students are having.
Bless you.
Next, we get into being college and career ready and looking at those national college and career readiness standards. So there are national college-ready benchmarks, there are also national career-ready benchmarks. And so how are we doing when it comes to that? Well, when you start looking at assessments, and there are a variety of assessments that are out there related to college and career readiness, ACT, SAT through the College Board, the ASVAB, ACT Work Keys, there are credentials through tech schools and things of that nature. We also follow up with these types of assessments, as well as students overall, how they're doing, through things like 180-day follow-ups, as well as five-year follow-ups. So one of the things that's really important is we start also not just thinking about anecdotal evidence on how we're doing, but we also start putting metrics behind how we're doing. So here are a few examples of some of the metrics that you'll see. Data since 2016 in terms of the growth of ACT scores, despite being in some precarious positions over the last couple of years with education and how we've had to do things. We are maintaining, obviously, what we've had. We've had about a half-point worth of growth since 2016. And I'm confident in our high schools' abilities in which to be able to continue to grow upon things like an ACT score. Additionally, there's other metrics through the state that we take a look at. And those include things like four-year graduation rates, academic proficiency in reading and English, so map scores and EOC scores and ELA, also map scores and EOC scores and things like mathematics. And through these charts, you can see our level of performance for our students who are meeting some of these college and career readiness attributes are particularly good. And so I'm, you know, very pleased with where we're at, but certainly, there's always room for growth. We also pick up academic proficiency in science, as well as when you think about post-program placement, that's that post-secondary piece, and how students who have career and college readiness, how are they leaving and what are they doing? Those are also variables that school districts track in a variety of different manners. And so that does include those that go to four-year schools, two-year schools, technical schools, career placement types of opportunities, as well as just being a concentrator in the work environment. And so making sure that students have appropriate placement, whether that's the employment field or whether that's in the education field. And then, obviously, looking at things like non-traditional program placement, too. And so making sure that we find ways to be able to better support underrepresented gender groups, as well as other groups that are not always represented well, such as students who have English language learners and/or special education, students who qualify with special education services. One of our last things is to look to expand enrollment in post-secondary pathways, especially with the populations, the diverse populations in which we serve. And so some of the ways in which we're currently doing that are through dual enrollment, you know, college or career technical education enrollment, our advanced placement AP program enrollment. Two new ones recently are the Early College Enrollment through St. Louis Community College, as well as the Make It Count. The Early College is more of a two-year, get your associates before you graduate high school. The Make It Count is really targeted more for the second semester senior to give them kind of a head start in going into some level of post-secondary opportunities. So we have developed those opportunities. And with some of the other things I said before, one of the things that we need to do is just make sure that we continue to build upon some of the things that we've already built and to make sure that it can be supported with finances and with continued enrollment and interest amongst our kids, as well as that opportunity to brand and communicate through our high schools in particular. So I would take any questions that you may have about that student preparation piece.
Go ahead, Jane. I have a question. The themed schools, how, how many different themes will there be? I mean, who selects what themes are the schools are going to be about? And how is that implemented exactly?
Sure, well, that will be, that's a work in process. And we expect that, starting this summer, to be able to have those application opportunities for schools in which to be able to really pitch our cabinet, to be able to say, I'd like to do this, or I'd like to be able to do that, the two that have come to the surface right now.
And would they do that? Would they make that theme selection based on what they already know about their population?
Well, I think.
Or would it be a survey-type thing, or, you know, what, how do they arrive at that?
Yes, yes, and yes. So I think certainly making sure that there are, that there's buy-in from the community, because the one thing that you don't want to do within a community, any community, is to try to start something that you know that maybe your, the population in which you are serving will not necessarily support. And so, you know, those are processes that we continue to work through. Think of it like a school choice program as well, you know, that is, it's just going to be a Woolwind opportunity or a Rogers opportunity?
Okay.
Or will other students across the district have the opportunity, à la Mosaic, to be able to participate in those types of things? Principals will need to pitch ideas on how they really see that developing. You will find, I think, that it's either going to be in a very small cohort at maybe a particular grade level. Certainly, some schools that we have looked at have an entire school that are related to themes. In the past, we've been to other places like Jonesboro, Arkansas, where they've had some variety of themed schools in that particular district as well. So it, the work has been going on even pre-pandemic. Was the last visit we made prior to things shutting down was in February of 2020.
So could you give me like four or five examples of themed schools?
Sure.
What is their theme?
So environmental studies could certainly be an option at a place like Woolwind, the International Baccalaureate, where that focus on lifelong learning could be an option that could be available at Rogers, or at least they're exploring. You could have a STEAM school, science, technology, engineering, arts, and math being Woolwind into it. Fine Arts Academy could be another type of option that would be there. Computer schools, you know, some, à la what Webster used to be able to, Webster always used to be able to have. Those are the types of themes that you could certainly see. Those are usually the ones that are pretty standard, I think, amongst the concept of themed schools. And it's really just providing.
So there's things that we already have, but then they're going to be kind of more directed in that school to that being the concentration. Is that correct?
I think that's a good way of looking at it, yes.
Okay.
So we do have one building that's talking about something around communication. But I think the two key things to really consider with these concepts are, one, they're not something that the district is imposing on buildings, that they have to go down a certain route. And, two, that this theme or this program is the lens through which they deliver the same curriculum that's being used at all schools. So third-grade ELA is still going to be third-grade ELA, it's just going to be delivered through a programmatic lens a little bit more. Now, IB is a little bit different than that, but that's the general concept. So we're not saying, you know, easily you have to be at this school.
Right.
We're really letting that come up from those communities.
Boil up organically out of what they have.
Yes. And how do we support that concept in those communities, not force it? Because really, what we've seen in the areas where it's been forced, it doesn't go very well.
I would imagine not.
Can I ask a question and see if you could speak to, visiting these model schools, specifically Rogers and Woolwind, taking a look at similar themes that they were interested in? Do these schools that, that are in, what is their, is their school district have any similarities to what Melville looks like in regards to population and/or, you know, demographics or size?
Sure, well, I can speak to the two that were the visits that have been done this year. You know, Isles Elementary was servicing a much higher gifted, you know, percentage. Not all schools had to be like that, but we went to the closest one that would represent that.
Okay.
But it's certainly, that's the outlier, it's not the norm. And so those types of schools, you can find them in high-poverty areas, you can find them in low-poverty areas. Schools like, we went to visit in West Plains. You know, according to Dr. Kemper, you know, that was a particular school district that did, was not fortunate enough to be able to have as many of the resources as what we are able to have. So they serve a much higher percentage of students who qualify for free and reduced. And so, you know, a themed school can be, and in visits with Arkansas, you know, Jonesboro was an area where there was certainly a majority of students, you know, qualifying, you know, underneath that socioeconomic indicator. That themed schools can be done in any type, working with any type of, of small group. It can be done with any type of, you know, high resource, low resource. It really just depends on the grit and the perseverance and, of the school district and the administration there to be able to be successful.
And just, and thank, yeah, thank you. And thank you overall for presenting this, again, so that we can reiterate the programs that we do currently have, because I still feel like there's so much opportunity for communication to our community and our parents and our students as to what is ahead for them with choices that lie ahead. So I'm glad to have this presentation. Thank you.
Is there any evidence that themed schools improve student performance overall?
I'm not aware, Scott, of the research specifically that is out there. If there have been case studies specifically done around that particular piece? I think that's a good question, and it would be one that I would have to do a little bit of digging in, because I don't want to give you an answer and make something up on the spot for it to not be rooted, in fact. That would be one that I would have to look at a little bit.
Okay, thank you. And I've got one other question. I'm sorry, go ahead.
So there was some stuff that came out of our incorporation around late 2019. As we were going to visit Jonesboro, it showed some indications that there was some paper building in student.
Because maybe it improves student engagement, maybe? Is that the, the general thought?
When students are interested in the theme or the topic that you, that you're bringing to your school, there's a probably more intrinsic and extrinsic motivation to be able to come to school and to be able to have daily experiences. Obviously, we know high attendance certainly leads to higher levels of performance academically.
Sure. This is a, a bit of a newbie question. I'll probably be asking those for the next year or so here. So on the, on the charts that you were showing in the previous pages, you had three columns. One was Melville R9, the next one was consortium, and the next one was State. Melville R, well, the left, the two left columns were always identical.
It's the way that, it's usually by graduating classes. And so, you know, like in this particular instance, you know, generally speaking, your, like your number of CTE concentrators in this particular one, generally, you're capturing that information at the end of their high school career. And so that's where you're, the number of total graduates that, in this particular instance, who are also meeting some of the levels of college and career indicators, not every student is necessarily meeting all of those college and career ready indicators. And that is part of the challenges for us to continue to take kids and move more kids into meeting those indicators that currently not all are. And so that's the reason why, when you look at some of the numbers that you see here, you know, the 358 versus 366 versus 385, the numbers are usually, you know, within the two left-hand columns compared to the state. The difference there is that when you're talking about, you know, college and career readiness, you know, you can see the total number of concentrators, the work concentrators associated with the career and technical education, part of the career and technical education field as well.
So you have to take a certain number of career technical ed courses to be considered a concentrator, or a student to be considered a concentrator. So, for example, if a student goes to South Tech, they're going to be a concentrator. However, a student who thinks enough, like they do our Pro-Start program here at Melville High School in culinary, may reach that concentrator level.
So when you think at the total number of graduates that you would have across the district in a particular year, you would be looking, ranging between, let's say, 700 to 800? That's the reason why that number, when you're looking at 385 or 366, it's because a little less than half are, are pursuing various things. And we have a variety of pathways within our schools with fax and with business and with marketing and computer science. There are a lot of ways to be able to meet that. But there are also certainly a lot of kids who decide to not necessarily pursue some of those pathways, which is part of the reason why we've made it part of our strategic plan, because we feel very confident that kids who participate in these types of things tend to have better success, whether that's going into just a straight employment opportunity or some level of post-secondary, military, or any other thing that they would be taking part in after their high school career is over. Jane?
Yep. Thank you for bringing that to my attention, Scott. And this may, I, I may have, I may have just learned to ignore this, but why are the first, you know, why does it say Melville R9 with our code number? And the numbers are identical in those two columns over and over again? Now, did you just explain that and I completely missed it?
Sure. No, no, no.
Oh, okay.
The SNPs that you see here specifically come from.
Why do we need those two columns?
So the SNPs that you see here specifically come from DESI, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education data.
Okay.
So I was pulling that data specifically from them. The first column is our, certainly our school district. The second is what part of the consortium overall. And so you're going to see that in all of the data here, you'll see those are matching numbers. It's just the way that the data is reported via the state, because they're looking at the district, they're looking at the bigger picture of it, they're also just looking at comparables to the state level. So I included that just to show that in this college and career readiness element, that there are metrics that we're also looking at, that we're not just depending on anecdotal evidence, like sometimes you might see in some of the other areas that I listed previously.
Okay.
Well, you know, trying to make sure that we're providing facts and we're providing statistical evidence of how students are actually doing. So we can measure it year after year after year and really find and look at the trend data. Good question, though. Yeah, absolutely.
I have one question. As far as the themed schools, is there an estimated fiscal impact on that? Or will it not really make a difference financially?
So in terms of the fiscal impact, will be things that they will certainly pitch as part of their overall plan and as part of their overall application. But in terms of asking for anything extra, the plan will be that for our curriculum budget to be able to help support the individual schools get themselves off of the ground with regards to whatever their plan may consist of.
Basically, funds that they would be spending on a different plan. It's just a themed plan.
It could, yes, it could be some level of consumable resources. It's not going to deviate from the, you know, the Missouri learning standards. It's not deviating from our curriculum. Like Dr. Gaines mentioned previously, it's taught the same, it's the same concept, just taught through a programmatic feature of such of a theme. And so any, any financial issues that would come up, like I said, would be part of the overall curriculum budget.
Thank you.
Sorry, everyone, last question. ACT scores, I love to see that they were basically near a five-year high. Have, have, have students stopped taking those tests as much? And how might, and if they have, if we are having less students take them, is that affecting the overall score?
The last couple of years, our percentage did go down from a high of 90, 91% of the students taking it, I believe in 2019, and then moving into the 2020 school year, obviously. That put a little bit of damper. In 2021, it was about, I'd say, 78%. We continue to pay, and the curriculum budget continues to pay for all juniors to be able to have an opportunity to be able to take the ACT or a related assessment that would be appropriate for each student. And so instead of just giving everybody an ACT wins a certain percentage, may just absolutely say, I am not going to college, it's not for me. But we can certainly have them work on some level of college or career readiness assessments like an ASVAB, which is a military assessment, or the ACT Work Keys, which is more of a career readiness sort of feature. All of those are approved tools and assessments through Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So it's really a matter of finding the right test for the right student.
So to give a little history, the state at one point funded the ACT for all juniors. That got, that funding got removed. We decided that we would continue to fund that. Then, over time, DESI has layered in that all juniors don't have to take the ACT, which they didn't fund anymore, but they've offered these alternate assessments that students could take, and it's still, the, the results on those assessments still count in the state accountability system. So next Wednesday, juniors here will take the test of their choice.
Anybody else?
I have a question about the themes. Are we planning on alternative transportation needs if the themed schools increase the need for school choice for?
That'll be part of the conversation, is to try to be able to. That'll be part of the conversation is to try to be able to figure that out if we involve getting transportation involved or if it becomes more of a mosaic model with regards to a drop-off and a pickup. None of those determinations have yet necessarily been made. Again, we're looking also through that access and opportunity lens. We're trying to ensure that all students, no matter where they live, have the opportunity in which to be able to participate in some of these types of programs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So another district, actually in Missouri, don't have theme schools. They call them all, I miss. You know, and mostly they're four big programs in that particular district.
They've had them up and running.
They've probably got six or eight now, but they, their first ones have been run for probably close to seven years. And next year is the first year that it looks like they're going to have widespread transportation.
So hopefully we'll be on a timeline that we can get a little bit thicker than that before coming into that fold, more buildings try to come into that fold. It'll make that more interesting.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Prop S update, Dr. Gaines.
So where we sit today, we got a couple of projects that are essentially completed. The board has accepted bids on four other projects and then the fifth one tonight. We did open the bids on the work at Blades on Tuesday. Those bids will come before you on the 28th for consideration. There is an alternate on that bid that we need to have some internal conversation about whether or not we're going to take that alternate. And then we've got some additional bids due next week. We've got Bernard, OES, and the Rogers entrances are due. We did originally, if you go back to previous presentations, we had point in that grouping of schools. We've had to pull them out because of fire zoning issues with their security entrance. So that's delayed that a little bit. So we're probably going to combine that with Wollin and Oakville Middle. So that'll come very much later down the road. And then the bids for the Beerbomb front entrance are going to be due on May 10th. The ones that are in red are indicative of projects that came in over our estimates from what we, our numbers from 2020. We know that as we're about to begin some of these construction projects, especially at Oakville Elementary and Beerbomb, that construction disruption will be upon us. That's not something the district has experienced in a long time. Normally, we're used to getting most projects done over the summer. That's not going to be the case with a lot of these. Some of them we will be. So depending on the site location, we may have disruption to traffic flow around the building or building entry. As we've been out talking with some of our faculties this spring about what's kind of coming with Prop S, we've asked them to begin to drop hints and plant seeds with our families that during this disruption and this traffic flow may be a challenge around our buildings. We do have these big yellow things that drive up and down streets and pick up kids and bring them to school and then we take them home. So that may be a little bit more convenient. And to give an example of that disruption, Beerbomb is going to be where our most disruption is because in this first phase of doing that security entrance, they're going to lose their office, they're going to lose their health office, and they're going to lose two classrooms during that construction. So we'll be moving those functions within the building to accommodate that. And as part of all of that, we have an early childhood classroom that will be moving to Troutline during the construction process so that we can continue to provide early childhood services there or for our students. If we look back again, we go back to our November board meeting is when we really started talking about concerns with the construction costs. We introduced the concept of how we could use ESER funds and how we could look at moving projects among funding sources. And at that time is really when we split Beerbomb into the two phases. Came back with a more exhaustive update, although we've been doing updates monthly, but talked a little bit more in February, at the second February meeting, that it was becoming more and more clear that the Prop S funds would not be enough to cover all the projects and that we were starting a process to engage and reprioritize those. We did all of that through March and I'll talk about that a little bit later as we look at the results of that. But that engagement process really started with our administrators to reprioritize. We did two separate community groups where we got feedback. And then we took all of that feedback, shared that with a group of three committees that gathered on April 6th to look over those results and give us some feedback on what became our early recommendations because we had been working on things kind of throughout and looking at stuff through multiple lenses to see what might be possible. So going back to those conversations and central office, which really went back to November, is how can we leverage these other capital funding sources to deal with these construction cost escalations? So we talked about ESER and we talked about our 410 fund and Prop A and Prop R as how we could do that and what, in what arenas those funds could be used. And we talked about the movement of those. So essentially, we've talked about moving projects from all of these buckets over to ESER, which can fund HVAC that would allow projects to move out of the Prop S bucket. Would still be able to do some of those, but they would be funded through a different source. So going back to November, this is what we thought we were going to be able to do with each of those funding sources. We've been able to update that significantly. And at this point, we believe we've got about 1.4 million in ESER funds that we can move over HVAC projects, about 100,000 in 410 fund in the 23, 24 school year, about a million five in Prop R over the next two years, and about 300,000 in Prop A over the next two years. The Prop A funds can only be used for roofs and HVAC systems. So our recommendations after all of these meetings and feedback is that we're recommending to use that 1.4 million in ESER funding for the HVAC, that that get attributed to the Rogers HVAC work that's already been bid. The bid was a little over 1.5 million and that work is slated to begin this summer. If we do, are able to free up additional ESER funds, we do have two other big HVAC projects or larger HVAC projects that are coming down the pike in later years that are slated to be funded by Prop S. The John Kerry one and then the Melville High School one is of a sizable nature. We looked at the 100,000 in the 410 funding. We believe that we can off, we can use that to offset some of the costs of the Troutline, Hagaman, Washington work. And we would be paying those bills during the 23, 24 school year, so likely early in Like July, August of 23 is probably when we would tap that for FY24. Similarly, the 1.5 in Prop R funding, we would fund that same project with that. That project is slated to be bid probably in January of 23. So being able to pay for part of that in the summer of 23, hitting fiscal 24 makes sense for us from a mechanical standpoint. The Prop A funding, that 300,000 can only be used for roofs or HVAC. So we are doing a roof project at Berkeley that'll be in the summer of 23. So again, that will hit FY24 as well. Further, we have talked about delaying projects. The five projects that we would delay or recommending delaying are the additional restrooms at both Berkeley and Beasley, as well as kind of parking, traffic flow, road improvements at Hagaman, Beasley, and Troutline. We would also delay and also potentially eliminate, these would be the first two projects that we would eliminate if needed, would be the stadium restrooms here at Melville High School as well as the new transportation building. Given all of that and conversation, we believe that it would be, that we should restart our Beerbomb Phase Two planning, which is additional classrooms at Beerbomb so that we could bid those late next spring. And that if you recall, going back to last June, we had kind of coupled the MHS ballfields with the bus garage. So if the bus garage might get eliminated, we needed to decouple those. So we believe we can take a look at revisiting that design and scope and move forward with bidding here as soon as we could. One of the other overarching ideas that's not in here, but we heard loud and clear was that we should move forward with all of the security entrances. So we are doing that for sure. And then, you know, as we look at these projects, we've been doing regular Prop S updates pretty much every, at least once a month since Prop S passed. We'll continue to monitor and reevaluate funding every time we get a revised estimate, every time we get bids. And we can, because of these recommendations, we've kind of tweaked the project timelines. As I mentioned, Hagaman, Troutline, and Washington can be pushed a little bit later. Really, all of these are going to be pushed just a little bit later than what we had originally slated as we pull Beerbomb kind of back into the mix with Phase Two of that. So with that, we have prepared a resolution for your consideration. Now attempt to answer any questions you might have.
So you're mentioning delaying projects, but right now, we're not looking at eliminating anything. Is that right?
We're, as of today, we're not saying definitively, we're not doing this. We're not recommending that today. Six months from now, we may change that, but as of today, we're not there.
Gotcha. So basically, anything that's listed as being delayed has the potential of being eliminated?
Yes.
Okay. Do you think you had adequate representation from all the schools when you're receiving feedback related to how Prop S money should be spent? Meaning, were adequate parent groups from all schools voicing their opinions?
Well, if we look at how the Prop S list was originally developed, that had faculty members and parents from every building represented on that facility steering committee. In the two community meetings that we had, our principals were asked to get their parents to those meetings. And most buildings were represented at those meetings, some more than others.
One last question, I'm sorry. The, the, the things that were listed here in the delay, including Hageman's, Hageman's second entrance, the road widening, Troutline staff lot reconfiguration, were those considered for general workflow or was there any safety measures that were considered when, when we were looking at actually doing all of those jobs in terms of like pedestrian flow and things of that nature?
So if we look at Hageman, there's just really a desire to be able to have more than one way in and out of that complex. If we look at Troutline, it really related to the staff lot, parking on that staff lot and the very small size of that. So our plan was to loop it around the backside of Troutline, which really would have opened up new avenues for complete traffic flow around that building. And then the road widening at Beasley, the road's just narrow and sometimes people clip mirrors, so we're just widening the road.
So it's more just overall efficiency and not so much safety per se?
Let, yes. Safety more at Beasley probably.
Well, so at the last meeting on the 6th, there was some conversation around delaying these projects to get, be better stewards of, stewards of our tax dollars actually because there's a feeling that hopefully inflation will come back down and we will then get more return on our dollar if we delay projects. So I definitely think that we need to delay as many projects as we can right now and hope that it's going to get better. I don't, the problem is we don't know when it will get better, which is a little scary. And then the other question I had around, I wanted to get the board's opinion, we had some conversation around project management, our construction management. And with delaying the projects, I did some research about it. Currently, Mike is our facilities manager, but he's also overseeing project, as is Dr. Gaines and Dr. DeKemper. I don't think that'll change, even if we had some sort of a project manager or construction manager. But I guess my question to the board is, do we want to task the administration with looking into the possibility of hiring someone to oversee everything in the hopes that it would actually save us money? You know, everybody has a story. There's going to be stories around town that say a project manager cost them more and there's going to be stories that say a project manager saved them money and perhaps saved them 13%, charged 3% and then saved the taxpayer and our tax dollars 10%. Grace, this would be probably a great place where you might have some insight.
Might know somebody who knows somebody.
May I ask you?
Sure.
My question is, on what basis would this project manager be bidding their services? On the whole scope of work? Or part of the work? Are the work we're going to do immediately? Are the work we're going to delay or, you know?
So I think that that would be part of the investigation, you know? Not to heap more work on anyone, but that would be part of the invest, the vetting of an organization to do that, whether it's a person, one person or an organization. I did speak to, there's two different, Navigate Building Solutions and North Star Management that does that type of work, just to see how it works.
Do you, does any of your duties encompass that type of thing, hiring project managers?
Construction managers.
Construction managers, yeah.
I'm a project manager, but I do hire construction managers who review the plans for constructability. And then they help us with the bid documents to make sure, they help get enough bidders to come in and bid on them.
I guess.
They're great. They're great resources, but some are more expensive and some take more time than others. And there are ways, like Navigate's great. They're fantastic and-
Right. So I guess, I guess my question is, what is going to be their criteria?
So what kind of contracts do we do right now when we have consultants? Are they a year, two years long? Like if we hire a consultant to do a study or something, is it like- Like, if we hire a consultant to do a study or something, is it like a year or two years? Because what we could do is say, this is a one-year contract, it can be renewed.
I mean, I suppose we could try it.
Well, they can do it by project. I think they can do it by cluster. They can do it, I mean, I just think, I mean, the question is, does everyone want to investigate?
I'd like to look into it. I'm not agreeing to it, but I, you know, it's all going to be based on the price. You know, let's face it, you know, we don't, and the quality of work, we don't even know what that's going to be. We can check references, of course, but it's all going to hinge on the price.
We won't know until we take the look.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, really, we should probably take the investigative step to at least find some, get some references, see what they actually cost versus cost savings, to at least give us an idea of what we're doing.
Would my question, go, I'm sorry.
Especially for consultants and contractors that have expertise and education rather than just general.
And my question, my only question would be, like, because all of that, I mean, I, how could you not agree with that? Is there a negative from looking, I mean, is there any negative?
We could do.
From looking in and investigating this further?
We could just put out a letter of intent to see, like, to request those. So we could ask, you know, put it out to public for the construction managers to submit a letter of intent for interview, and we could just talk to them, and there's no.
There's no commitment. It's just basically just having a conversation.
Yeah.
And it can be up to them. So we, you know, put it out like you advertise it.
It's always going to be that situation of, they're going to cost us amount of, amount of money, is that going to be worthwhile to see if we get that cost savings? And that's always going to be the determination is, like Peggy said, it costs us 3%, but they save us 13%? They've saved us 10%. That's, and in this project, 10% of our bond money may get us over the line for some projects we would either put off or get rid of.
Yeah, so a lot of what they could do is, is do value engineering and that they would go through all of the plans and figure out what they could get rid of, or, you know, what they could postpone from, from the construction standpoint. I think it could save money.
Yeah, I wouldn't have any objection to looking into it at all.
This was, this was something I keyed in on, Peggy, when you asked the question at the previous board meeting. And I, I posted about it, and I even, I've got a fellow '86 Melville grad who's a senior level person at Lawrence Group. In fact, he, he's, he headed up much of the work that was happening at the foundry. And what he told me is that construction managers, a highly skilled construction manager, they might charge you 1% to 2% of the total job cost, but they could save you up to 10% in, in potential overages that might happen without having a, a single point of contact, if you will, for all of those jobs. So, you know, I mean, if you break down the decision based off of those types of numbers, I think it's an easy decision. But there's an unknown with that. But I do think it's important to know that if we do have a, a construction manager heading this up, it's taking burden off of our administrators.
Sure.
And we have to make up for learning loss over the next two years, which is when all of these jobs are going to be happening. So I think beyond the, the financial reality of this, I do think there is also something to be said that we just, we, we should do everything we can to make sure we're making up for learning loss. And I think this might be taking a step in the right direction with that.
It also kind of guarantees quality also. Right now, I feel like it would be impossible to task anybody here to be at the job site every single day if we needed them to be.
Okay, let's look into it.
They may also be tuned into, you know, shortages in the labor market, cost differences in the labor market, how materials are trending up and down, because we're going to be dealing with materials costs being variable right now. We're going to deal with a labor pool that's fixed to a degree, and we're going to deal with labor costs that are going to be derived from how busy people are and how attractive we want to make our projects. And that's probably part of why these costs are going up, is because everybody's busy with these big scale projects going on all over the area.
I'll give you an example. So my construction manager just told me that I needed to bid my job in July because MoDOT projects at that time were, were low. So they know those things. It'll be a more attractive bid opportunity for most contractors, and they know those things.
Okay. Do it.
So we're being asked.
We've got the document pulled up, so it can be edited live.
Okay. So would we want to ask for, request for qualifications? Is that what? From companies to?
You can call it a letter of intent. Like, we could put a request for letters of intent, and then they, and then we can see what we get.
Yeah.
Or, I mean, RFQs are good too, request for qualifications, but that, that takes a lot more work for construction managers to put together a packet of qualifications. Let's say we put out an RFQ and we only get two. If we put out a request for letters of intent, we might get 12, so.
And so what would a letter of intent encompass?
They would say that they are interested in doing this work for us, and then we could make that pool smaller for either request for qualifications or interviews.
Okay.
I just feel like we could get a bigger pool. Those RFQs are difficult, and they're already busy right now. But we can look at both and see.
It's a more casual inquiry than an RFQ or an RFP.
There's what?
It's a more casual inquiry than an RFQ or an RFP.
Yeah.
Because I think we just need to identify individuals that would be willing to do it, and then if we find that they're actually credible and worthwhile, then we can have that more in-depth conversation with them.
Dr. Gaines, so, I mean, we're going to start working on these jobs immediately, and I guess we already are in some degree. If we were going to bring on a, a project or a construction manager, I guess we're going to have to, like, separate it in terms of, like, you know, they can't necessarily oversee the ones that are immediately in action, but we might, maybe they're overseeing the ones that are going to be started a little bit later, I guess?
I've had them pick up right in the middle.
What's that?
I've, I've had them pick up at different stages. So they would be able to pick up.
So I think it, also, just from awareness, especially for our two new members, we kind of have projects that we treat differently. So we've been doing HVAC and roofing projects for years. We do those with our engineers, no issues, right? Those run us pretty seamlessly, that we've been able to do over the years. Some other just piddly projects, I mean, we do parking lot stuff pretty frequently, you know, pretty much every summer, on some small projects. Some of them are a little bit bigger. We do fencing projects. We're, we're used to doing those things. So a lot of those, we, we take out of the purview of our architects completely to be able to get some savings there. So I guess my assumption is, the projects that you're talking about are the bigger projects that we're running through our architects, which in some cases are, you know, still around a million to a million and a half dollars up to. I'm getting scared at what Beerbomb's going to end up being.
Yes, I don't personally see the necessity for it on roofs and HVAC. I think you guys have that under control. Does everyone else agree with that? My thought is on the larger projects, so that we don't have, so we have some more specialization also overseeing the certain projects, whether it's a baseball field or an addition. I, I've done some research just looking around. I know Navigate, for instance, is currently working in Brentwood School District, and we ran into their superintendent at a meeting, and he said unbelievably, no, it's a whole school, they're building a whole school, that's a whole different ballgame than what we're doing. But that they, he really saved them a lot of money so far, and just.
They're doing it for Great Rivers Greenway right now on two projects and saved us a lot of money.
Yeah. And I know, no, Navigate has a specialist in K through, K-12, but obviously, we have to put out a letter of intent. I don't know what, if, you know, other companies, but we would find out, I guess, if we did it. So can we just add a line that we want to, what would you recommend?
Well, you know, our rationale for doing this and other kind of sometimes more technical pieces via resolution is so that we can be a lot more specific in the wording. So, don't know what anybody has in mind, I mean, off the cuff. I would say, issue a letter of intent for construction management services on some, but not all, Prop S projects. That's from the hip.
Maybe specify.
Feel free to, feel free to wordsmith that.
I mean, the, the projects we obviously do regularly, roofs and HVAC and parking lot, those probably should fall off of that scope, maybe in the larger scope projects involving large-scale construction or large-scale remodeling of buildings.
Or you just eliminate roof, HVAC, and parking lot? I mean, that's, you know, if we're, if we're looking to somehow define the language.
Some of the parking lots are pretty heavy. I think you guys mean, like, overlay and all that?
Steel and structure.
Right. Yes, but park, most of these parking lots are like a bigger deal, I think.
Well, we've got, well, if you think Beerbomb, for example, that project includes parking lot work, because we're redoing that front end.
Anything that has to do with an entrance and coming off of our property line, I think requires a construction manager input.
Or the mosaic elevators, since that involves hydraulics. The mosaic elevators are going to involve, you know, putting two elevators in, reworking that interior of that building. That's probably one that, that points a big knee on side to the construction manager.
Okay, how about issue a letter of intent for construction management purposes for some Prop S projects as determined to be necessary?
I would say issue a request for a letter of intent, because we're going to, we're requesting the letter from them.
Issue a request?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Issue a request for a letter of intent for constru- I can't see it.
As determined to be necessary.
Is that good?
Do we want to add based on the scope of the work or the nature of the work that is necessary? Based on the nature?
I think as determined.
I think we have it scoped into the.
We know what we mean.
To be necessary piece.
I like it. As necessary.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else on the Prop S resolution? Any questions?
Do I make a motion that we approve it as?
As adjusted.
Is amended. 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 Thank you. There's a senior moment there.
Okay.
As amended.
Okay, so Jean made a motion to adopt Prop S resolution as amended.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, seven zero. Thank you, Dr. Gaines. Now we move on to the COVID-19 resolution.
Box here, but really, no change from previous resolutions. Overall, our student numbers have held steady. Had seen a little bit of a rise in adult cases over the last couple of weeks to levels like January, first part of February. So that had triggered mask, moving back to masks in some of our peripheral adult-only buildings, where we had exceeded the threshold recently. But it looks like that's looking pretty good, and they should be back to no masks next week, probably. But no change in the resolution, just changing the dates that are on there.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Nothing?
If we, if I make a motion that we accept the resolution as presented.
Can I, can I just ask one question? Is there, I'm, I'm quite confident this question probably hasn't been asked before, but is there any other measures that school districts are taking to mitigate COVID spread that don't include masks? Is there anything that, that like, you know, stores are putting up Plexiglas and, you know, there, obviously, we, we went through a social distancing phase. Is there anything else that, that we have seen any other public institution do that was outside of mask requirements?
So really, I would put it into three kind of maybe broad categories beyond the mask. So those being ventilation, respiratory etiquette, and handwashing. So we've all kind of focused on those. Our HVAC projects are addressing that. We are also, with Esser dollars, we have purchased a number of air cleaners for rooms. Actually, we just got those in the other day, finally. Supply chain issues and all.
So basically, the only thing people are doing on a national level is really, it comes down to masking. They're not, there's no other strategies that anybody's, you know, using outside of masking, is what I'm, is what I'm asking. And I don't expect anybody's going to know that. I'm just kind of throwing it out there in the room.
Well, yeah, there's been, there's been schools virtual.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, that was a strategy for a while.
Really, from a, from a system standpoint, and the thing that, thing that people really don't see is the ventilation piece.
Sure.
And we've been pumping more fresh air into the buildings the whole time, but people aren't necessarily going to notice that.
Well, and going back years now, unfortunately, you've also upped all of the sanitation processes for the custodians, and I still remember you with your, they all have guns that they were spraying.
Oh, yeah, we did all the guns. We've had Plexiglas everywhere. Now we've got Plexiglas stored all over the place.
So I mean, we had, yes. I mean, masks were not the only mitigation strategies at all being used by our district. You name it, we used it.
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't so much about what we were doing. I was just wondering if there's any, are there any other solutions out there that maybe some other districts or public institutions have utilized?
Right.
That, that, you know, God forbid, if we find ourselves in a situation and fall, if we consider other options now, it might be easier to head off a problem in the fall.
Right.
You know, that's really the nature of the question. It's not so much what, what have we done? It's trying to figure, trying to think outside the box a little bit more.
Fortunately for us, Dr. Gaines has some great connections all across the country, and they stay in very close contact. And I'm sure if there was something better or more efficient, we would have been doing this. That's just my opinion, but.
Ventilation and cleaning has been probably the biggest pieces that people really don't see on a normal basis. That, that's real, that's really happened nationwide, especially with the air cleaners. We had tested some stuff kind of early on, a couple of years ago, that really didn't show much promise. Then we found out about this other thing. Last fall, we tested a little, we tested a couple of those. We definitely saw some difference there, so we had used some Ester funds to get some more out of us.
All right. Everybody good?
I made a motion, we need a second.
Second.
I think Grace already seconded, so all, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, seven zero. Thank you. Now, action items by consent. Does anybody have any? Does anybody have any questions, or wanna pull anything? No?
Question.
Okay, motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, seven zero. This is not on the agenda, Dr. Gaines, but we have a speaker that signed up for after, for a non-agenda item, so I'm assuming we can add that?
So we need a motion to amend the agenda to add it.
Okay.
Do I make a motion to adjudge the amendment to add a acre's comment on a non-agenda item?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, seven zero. So Steve's, I'm sorry if I'm gonna say this wrong, Soderopolis, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right.
Earlier today, by a philosopher, and he had some, what I consider pertinent comments regarding education. And it doesn't have anything to do with any of the business that's been conducted before the board this evening. But, I, after I read this, I thought about it as kind of a cautionary tale. I'd like to read that to you, if I could. New experiments are made in education that endanger the lives of impressionable children, and any voice of concern that is raised is dismissed as reactionary. How many riots and suicides and broken lives is it going to take before we will give up this illusion, that we can enter any zone of imagination and feed any image or ideas into young minds, trusting them to their own good judgment in their selections? State control of education gives to the government the power to shape the souls and write on the fresh slates of young hearts. This empowerment is the most important trust given to elected officers, and to assume that they accept that responsibility from a posture of neutrality is to live under the most destructive illusion. To elect one to the highest level of leadership, therefore, is to put into his or her hands the possibility and opportunity of shaping a nation's conscience. The ultimate test of any civilization is what we do with our children. The questions haunt us. What are we doing to our children when we tell them that there are no moral boundaries? When we ridicule sacred things? When we leave them vulnerable to any philosophy of life that comes around? What have we done? We have sacrificed them, as we have gambled away the sacrifice, the sacred, and left them to be vandalized by the evil that is present at every stage of life. We have a role in delivering them from evil, but we do havoc to their souls when we tell them there are no fences in life. Children are not objects to be gambled away, by spilling them into the destructive arms of the spirit of the age, arms that have been fashioned by the intellect at the cost of mind and soul. So I ask each of you to be very, very careful, when you deviate from what I regard as your responsibility to direct the teaching of our children, reading, writing, and arithmetic, and from your responsibility to prepare these children to become mature, responsible adults who can think and not just feel, and to know the difference between the two. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. I, if I can get authorization of closed session?
I guess I gotta do that now, don't I?
Yep.
I have to find it first. Sorry.
Pursuant to revised statutes of Missouri Section 010.022, the Board of Education may adjourn to closed session, oh, wait, am I reading the wrong thing?
Next, next part, next part.
Okay. Motion to enter a closed session meeting for the purpose of reading amendments of previous meetings and corrections and approval of same and other items under the Missouri Revised Statute 610.021, subsection 1 through 21, and 610.022, subsections 1 through 6, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting particular employees, Section 610.021-3, preparation for negotiations with employee groups, Section 610.021-9, and individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, or records pertaining to employees, or applications for employment, Section 610.021-13.
After you roll call, Joe.
Yes.
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 Okay.